Good evening and welcome to the February 23rd, 2022, Meeting of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Steven Spur, and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record, and it has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and dequorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page, and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. In close consultation with the city clerk's office, as well as careful consideration of relevant CDC and NJDOH guidance, the following precautions have been adopted to protect board members, professionals, including city staff, applicants, members of the interested public, and others in consideration of ongoing public health concerns. First, all meeting attendees are required to wear a face mask regardless of vaccination status unless speaking is part of the formal proceedings. Second, social distancing is encouraged wherever practical. Third, face masks and hand sanitizer are available for all attendees to use at the meeting room entrance. And finally, regular and rigorous cleaning of the facilities have been conducted by city staff. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise the board members on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Chris Nicola is a city employee and the zoning board secretary. Ms. Nicola works with applicants on preparing our applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Nicola does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Ms. Nicola, you please call the role of the members.
Sure. Chairman Spur?
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner is excused. Mr. Yuko?
Here.
Ms. Newell is excused. Mr. Marlin is also excused. Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Leukets?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, a quorum, you can proceed.
All right. We generally hear the cases in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some cases are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why their variances are needed. The board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public has an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. Our court reporter captures the stenography over the video recording, so also be very clear through the microphone if you can. Before you ask your questions, please, oh, I said that, after all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time, you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we then enter into executive session where the board members discuss the case and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in the discussion. Most applicants, applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If a case requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your case to another date, and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, is asked that I remind all applicants that they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Linson, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by the civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application, as it will cause extra work for city zoning staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the case. When I call your name, please come to the dais, tell me how many witnesses you have, and whether you think you can complete your case within 30 minutes. First on the agenda this evening is Nine Laurel Avenue, Colleen and David Silk. Or their attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Samantha Alfonso of Dempsey-Dempsey &amp; Sheehan, here on behalf of the first two applications, both Nine Laurel Avenue, the chairman mentioned, and also 24 Prospect Street.
Okay. Any witnesses with you this evening?
Yes. We have two, two to three witnesses for the first application and two for the second application.
Okay.
And both, we expect to take less than 30 minutes.
All right. I like it. Thank you very much, Samantha.
Thank you.
Yep. Next will be Sarah Moran, Five Morris Court. Are you Sarah?
Sarah. She sent me, she's over there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm the architect, so I'm here to represent her.
Okay. You'll be, she'll, she will present the case, and then you'll provide the testimony.
Yeah, I'll just back up.
Okay. And you're the only witness for this, this application?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then finally, Sachin Nagda, Thirty Glen Oaks Avenue. Hello.
Hi, I'm here to present the Thirty Glen Oaks variance application. I'll be presenting, I will have two witness, expert witnesses with me here, and we'll be able to finish within 30 minutes.
Excellent. All right. Hang in, you're fourth on the, on the list tonight, but we'll get to you shortly. All right, Ms. Alfonso, hope you didn't get too comfortable. Come on up.
As mentioned, Samantha Alfonso, here for Nine Laurel Avenue, on behalf of the applicants, David and Colleen Silk, here with us this evening. And their professionals, Elizabeth Rush, architect, and Andrew Clark, civil engineer.
Okay.
If I can show...
There you go.
Okay. It is now showing on the screen. I believe we're marking this exhibit A1.
Yeah, we can do the whole presentation as A1.
Thank you. It'll be one PDF for the entire thing. So that is A1, that is shown, showing a front perspective of the proposed improvements to the home, really designed to be consistent and enhance the existing character colonial style of the home, while adding modern amenities, opening the floor plan, eliminating an extension of the rear yard driveway, eliminating a significant amount of unnecessary pavement, lot coverage, and reconfiguring and opening up their backyard for actual use. This is really proposed to be a complete renovation from top to bottom of the home. I understand they're doing all, all types of renovations, including siding, windows, new trim, again, while maintaining the existing architectural features and style of the home. To create this proposal with the new open kitchen master bedroom, they are looking to create a master suite on the second floor with this proposal. Excuse me. They are also removing the rear yard playset and play area, as well as relocating and redoing the existing patio, but maintaining the square footage, so there's no net increase in lot coverage. However, variance relief is requested for lot coverage as the existing is over at 49.8%. The proposal is slightly lower than the existing coverage at 49.5%, but that still is over the permitted 40%. So we are asking for variance relief, as well as for building coverage, where 25% is proposed and 20 is permitted. The last variance that we need is for floor area ratio. We are, I understand, about 150 square feet over the permitted square footage. 105 of that is actually for attic space over seven feet. And you'll see with Elizabeth Rush's testimony and her plans, that that portion is really quite small and a skinny hall type of seven-foot space, given the pitch. This site is adequate to accommodate this proposal and the extra 150 square feet in floor area. Again, right, this is really designed to keep with the existing design of this, I understand, 80-plus-year home, but really bring it modern, bring it into conformity with the standard of homes in the neighborhood and for Summit. And with that, I would ask if the board has any questions of me before we speak to the applicants.
Questions for Ms. Alfonso from the board? And I would just ask, are there any members of the interested public here this evening with regard to this particular application? Am I hit that 30-minute mark?
Thank you.
Who do we hear from first as your witnesses?
If we could, have Colleen and David Silk.
I'm just going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
My name is Colleen Silk, S.I.L.K.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the time to present our application for Nine Laurel Avenue. I am Colleen Silk. I live at Nine Laurel with my husband, David Silk, and our two daughters, Hannah, who is eight, she is a third grader at Brayton Elementary, and my daughter Kate, who is seven, and a first grader at Brayton. We have lived at Nine Laurel since 2014, when we moved to Summit, New Jersey. And David and I could probably spend a lot of time talking about how much we love our block. We think that it's an incredibly special place within the Summit community. We are very blessed to live there, and part of the reason why we're seeking to renovate our home is because we really want to continue to raise our children on Laurel Avenue. We feel like our neighbors have become like family. Our daughter's best friends live on our block, and we're really seeking to, as Sam said, preserve the exterior and the look and feel of our home, but make it useful and usable for us as a family. Our current home has three bedrooms, one full bath, one half bath. So as we, as our daughters enter their teenage years, having more than one full bathroom in our house would be very much appreciated. Having a kitchen that is more than eight by eight for us to cook and spend time with the children and entertain, again, we just really want to open the floor plan, modernize our home, and make it a place where we can grow for many years to come. So that is why we're here today, and we have our experts, our professionals, Elizabeth Rush and Andrew Clark, to answer any questions that you have about the details of the plan.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Do you have any serious questions, Ms. Alfonso?
I just have a couple of questions if I can. Thank you. Do you have an opportunity to review the board's administrative reviews? Would you agree to be bound by those comments, subject to your professional's comments?
We did have an opportunity to review those, and we agreed to all of the comments. Yes.
And then, did you have a chance to speak with your neighbors? And do you have a feeling that they felt comfortable with the sublocation?
We did have a chance to speak with all the neighbors who were on the list within the radius, and I, our sense, David spoke with most of them, is that they were very supportive and sort of would like to, would like to keep us in the neighborhood, and we're supportive of the plan to update and modernize our home.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Understanding we'll hear from an architect and an engineer? No, we'll hold your comments for Mr. Clark. All right. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Elizabeth? Would you like to?
Maybe Ms. Alfonso, just for the sake of our stenographer, would you mind sitting and just speaking into the microphone?
Oh, sure.
Just want to make sure you get captioned on the record.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi. Good evening.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Elizabeth Rush, R.U.S.H.
Thank you, and I know you've appeared before us a number of times. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you appeared?
No, sir.
All right. I imagine the board would like to accept her once again. Accept your credentials.
Great. Thank you. I would like to stand by the boards, just so I can flip through. Is that going to be, I can maybe move it over?
Yeah, just try to be sensitive with the mic, if you kind of angle the mic over there, maybe Ms. Alfonso, if you sit in the other seat.
Maybe you could use this one. Grab it and walk with it.
Man, wait.
Do your best.
Is that good? Is this on? Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Sam did a great job introducing the project, and I know you have more applications after this, but I do want to go over the existing conditions of the house a little bit more. So all of these are, I think, in your, in your sets of plans. But when the silks approached me, I've actually done, worked on a couple of houses on Laurel Avenue. It's a wonderful neighborhood. There's a lot of similarities in these houses. They were actually part of a, I think it was called the Summit Home Land Company in 1922, '23. They were built as modest, kind of first, first homebuyer homes back in the 20s, but they do have very similar floor plans. So when you walk in the house, you kind of fall into a medium-sized living room, and then off to the right, you always have a dining room, and in the back right corner, you usually have a small kitchen. So theirs is boilerplate, exactly how most of these homes were built. And just for their living with their two girls, it's just, it's very busy, it's not really conducive to entertaining. So that was the first thing that they wanted me to work on, was just expanding out the back, just because the lot is a little bit narrow on, on either side. So really, the, the lot lends itself to going off the back of the, with an addition, really gutting the entire first floor, and then reworking the second floor along with the addition space to create the number of bedrooms and the two bathrooms that, that they want. So just going to the proposed plans that you have, those renovations. So on, on the right is the first floor, so you'd be entering, entering the home with more of a proper front entry hall, a smaller sitting room to the left, keeping the formal dining room on the right. The stair location would remain the same, so we would be maintaining that center hall colonial feel. And then beyond, this dash line that you see on the plan is the line of the existing home. So we're extending to the farthest point, I think it's 12 and a half or 13 feet. And then we would have that modern, open floor plan feel, so you've got the family room on the left, and then L-shaped, much larger kitchen on the right, tucking in a mudroom on the right, near the driveway side for easy access, and then adding a proper half bath and a no walk-in pantry. All of these room spaces and sizes are modest, they match the size of the home. There's nothing, you know, overly grand about any of this. It's just a nicely scaled plan for their size and their lot that they have now. Coming upstairs, we are creating a little bit bigger of a hallway at the top of the stairs. Their master suite, or sorry, their primary suite would be located at the rear of the home. Again, this is the line of the existing second floor, and they would have a shared walk-in closet, don't have room for two, although I wish we did, a en suite bathroom. And then the girls will have, you know, as, as large of bedrooms as we can with, with the given, given footprint of the house. So we'd be having the three front bedrooms, and again, just one shared bath. So in total, four bedrooms, two bathrooms on the second floor. Existing right now, they do have a very steep walk-up stair to the existing unfinished attic. It's so steep, they don't really use it, so we're actually taking that stair out. It's, it's almost a tripping hazard, it's not to code, creating a little bit more space in that landing. So that extra square footage that's seven feet above headroom that Sam had mentioned, I think it's 105 square feet, it's really just going to be for storage anyway. There's no plans to finish the attic in the future, because we're actually taking that walk-up access away, and the owners are, it's kind of a trade-off that we talked about, so. And then just with the exterior of the house, so on the staff comments, the historical commission actually noted that we are maintaining the character of the front elevation, which was the goal, and just maintaining that streetscape along Laurel. And we're focusing most of our massing and volume enlargements, improvements on the rear of the home, so I have prepared an elevation of the rear of the house. So again, coming out with just an architecturally complementary gable roof line on the rear, this is the only two-story section that's a continuous two-story wall, just being very careful, because these are, this is a close-knit community, not to just build a two-story box, you know, on top of each other. And then this is your family room beyond these sliders, this is their, it's kind of tucked back, their master closet. So just creating volumes and stepping things and having multiple roof lines just to scale everything down. I think that's probably, probably it for the architecture, but Andrew can speak a little bit more about the, the lot improvements, mostly located, you know, with the driveway and the rear yard.
Okay. Any questions for members of the board for Ms. Rush? Tom, you taking copious notes? Anything you want to...
More for later on. I just, you know, I just appreciate the design, a lot of effort went into it, and look.
Regarding the, the windows you're going to replace, what type of windows you're having now?
Are we proposing to replace?
Yeah.
We're going to be using, it's a, a wood window, it's going to have, do you want to know the brand, or just?
No, 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 just the shape.
Oh, just the shape. Well, it'll be, like a top sash, will have the divided lights, and they'll be true divided lights, they won't just...
Wood shutters?
What?
Wood shutters?
Shutters on the front of the house.
On the front. You keep them.
Yes, while, while we're replacing them, because they're old and maybe to be replaced. But yeah, so we'll, we'll be keeping the, the top sash dividers and, and nice premium windows.
Any other questions for Ms. Rush? Mr. Dow or anything, or Mr. Clark's your guy?
Yes.
All right, fair enough. And then we'll just recognize that there are no members of the interested public here this evening to offer their questions for Ms. Rush. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And they move to Mr. Clark. All right. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Andrew Clark, C.L.A.R.K.E.
Thank you, and we have another repeat offender.
Yes.
Any changes to your credentials since the last time you appeared before us?
There are not. Still in good standing.
You're still in my line, Tom, sorry. Yes, Mr. Clark, we welcome you, and accept your credentials. Please proceed. All right. Jump right into it.
Andrew, first, can you confirm the, the coverage variance that we're requesting? Is 26% not the 25%? I said it's 26% for Krista's comment.
That's right. I was going to mention that, I heard you, I heard you say the 25% in your open, and Krista had a different take on it. I think what she was pointing out is I had not included the, the front steps and landing around the proposed portico in the calculation, so it adds us another 60 square feet. So that gets us to 26% on the building coverage.
Thank you.
All right. So what I'm referring to here on the boards are the plans that have been submitted with your package, so there's no changes or nothing added to them. On the right side here, I just affixed the survey, because I think it bears a brief discussion as to what the existing conditions are. The improvements that, that we're looking at are fundamentally in the backyard in terms of the site work. There really isn't any change to the grade, significant difference in the front of the house, so it's all in the rear of the house. The existing condition that's there now is the dwellings there, and there's a patio immediately behind the dwelling, adjacent to the driveway. The driveway comes back and sweeps around the, the left side, the south side of the existing detached garage. You know, I guess you could store a vehicle there. I think it's kind of outlived its usefulness in terms of this family's use of that space, so, so we're reconfiguring that. There's also a, I hesitate to call it a wall, there's a railroad-type edge that gets maybe a foot, 18 inches tops at the highest point, and then there's sort of like a mulched area where the playset is. Again, I think the playset is probably past its peak performance there, so what we're doing for the proposed is revisiting this whole area. In terms of the existing conditions, I just do want to mention there is a drain that's in that paved area in the back corner to the left of the garage. It doesn't appear to function, well, at all, almost. I couldn't identify a pipe, though. I believe there's a pipe coming out that, that goes out to the, to the catch basin, but based upon what goes on in storm events, it's not doing anything. So that's something we're looking to address in this. And, and as best I could tell, in the few times I visited the property and speaking with the silks, it doesn't, under normal rain events, adversely affect the neighbors, it's more affecting us than, than the neighbors. It's very... I couldn't identify a pipe, though. I believe there's a pipe coming out that goes out to the catch basin. But based upon what goes on in storm events, it's not doing anything. So that's something we're looking to address in this. And as best I could tell, and the few times I visited the property and speaking with the silks, it doesn't, under normal rain events, adversely affect the neighbors. It's more affecting us than the neighbors. It's very flat in this whole neighborhood, and certainly this property as well. And with the little bit of walling for the playset area and then the garage on the other side, everything tends to sort of collect in that corner. And during heavy inundations, they get water in the garage as well. So we're looking to address that with the proposed conditions. So that said, I'll jump right into that. Obviously, we've already described the addition in the back. So what we're doing is, you know, there was a patio there. We're reconfiguring that patio with more rectangular, clean look that connects to the driveway and to the new family room area where the sliders come out. And so we're removing all the railroad ties and removing all that pavement in there and restoring basically a lawn area, a yard area that's much more usable. And in the course of doing that, we're going to bring and reconstruct a new drain and leave a little depressed section right in front of the garage at the edge of the curb so water can come that collects in front of that garage can get off the driveway and into that drain. And then we're going to run this drain back out to the same catch basin. And we're going to, we'll have to check the pipe to see if at some point the pipe is intact and usable, and then just tap into it. If not, we may have to rerun it if it's damaged or took root damage over time or got crushed somehow. So we'll evaluate that pipe, but we're going to direct connect into the inlet out front. So the goal here is to provide a relief where one seems to be absent now. That's the only significant stormwater improvement that we're doing. And I think it's going to greatly affect the functionality of the rear yard. That's basically the gist. So I'd be happy to take questions, or if I miss something, can circle back.
Anything from you, Ms. Alfonso?
I don't think so, unless Chris has any questions.
No. Mr. Clark and I had exchanged emails, and we discussed that scenario as far as checking out that pipe and running it into the catch basin. So it's an existing condition to reduce in impervious coverage, which is a plus, they're not required to do anything but on their own to hopefully resolve the drainage situation. They're going to rework that pipe. The only other questions I had were about air conditioning units and possibly a generator. We did regroup on our, we had a meeting before to prepare for this meeting. And I think the consensus is at this time, there's no application for a generator. The proposed air conditioning unit we have is sort of between the steps that come off the addition and the driveway area. So it's in a conforming location. It's actually well in from the setbacks, which is not normally the case. But that's where we're proposing the unit.
Okay, thank you. That's the only questions I had. Mr. Chairman.
I have two quick questions. Regarding the lot width, is it conforming for this zone?
Well, the lot width is?
Am I reading the sheets correctly?
50 feet, and once required is 60.
Okay. So it's a little undersized.
A little undersized in the width.
Does it taper all the way back?
Actually, it's a pretty significant rectangle here. Yeah, it doesn't really taper. So it's 50 all the way down.
And then with regard to the playset, do you consider the stormwater seepage to be improved by returning to grass or no change?
Yes, I would, I would. You know, wood chips are fine, and they're good, you know, better than pavement. But when you have actual vegetation in there and lawn area, it definitely soaks up, you know, 90% of your normal small storms without anyone even noticing. It's definitely an improvement.
Any questions for members of the board?
Yeah, can I go back to the architect with one question?
Sure.
Something that dawned on me after, yeah, something that dawned on me after you were done with your testimony. So the current attic space, you said you're removing that internal staircase. I assume there'll be some kind of pull-down?
Yes.
But if I understand the variance request correctly, the 150 square feet FAR, 105 of that is the attic, is that?
It's existing, yeah, because we're not changing that part of the roof. And the roof that you see in the rear, the gable roof, that peak is actually at the seven-feet line, seven-foot line. I kind of know how to make roof lines work so that we don't add any more square footage that's unnecessary. So it's really just existing 100 square feet in the attic that's, you know, that's over seven feet tall.
So it's technically usable, but it's really not used or not proposed?
Yeah, it's usable, but it's just not finished. And, you know, we're taking away the?
Elizabeth, I'm showing sheet A5, the attic plan. Is that hashed area in the middle supposed to show the seven-foot?
That's right.
Area? So that's why I feel like it's kind of like a hallway, kind of.
Yeah, it's like a triangle at the top.
But it's really just the peak.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure. And the rest of the 150 square feet, Elizabeth, while we're talking about it, is really still with architectural amenities.
Yeah, definitely.
Has to deal with the little memory. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Clark? We don't want to take the limelight off him too soon.
No, I mean, I was just going to follow up on what Mr. Chairman Spur had said. Although the lot is narrow, it appears to be appropriately sized for the neighborhood.
It's consistent with what you see through that neighborhood and how that development was platted by and large.
Right.
Any other questions?
I wish I could have some steep slopes or something.
I'd help you on a regular lot size, I don't know. Give you a little bit of latitude there. Any questions?
Yeah, there's a note that red maple is being taken down or might be taken down. Is there an intention to replace it? Is it substantial? Can we just note that?
Where does that tree start?
Between the place, I believe, and it's right behind the sunroom.
So right in here?
Yeah.
Near the AC unit is?
It is.
Okay, okay. Got it. I didn't miss them, but I guess I missed out on the survey. You know, I think whether they put a new tree in there would be a choice.
Doesn't seem very?
I think John Linsen may have had a comment.
Yeah, he had a comment, and he didn't seem to be indicating that, you know, that there was anything special we need to do. He commented that a tree was being removed that wasn't shown on the plan.
Okay, that's it.
Is it likely that a tree will be placed as part of this, within the property at some future date? We love trees.
We could plant a tree. This one happens to be a squirrel.
Probably move it away from the house. Towards the back of the house.
Maybe something that absorbs water would be a good idea.
Yeah, and there is an existing tree that's right on the other side of the fence line on the left side that's still there in the backyard. And then there's a street tree out front. For a small lot, that's not bad.
Yeah, if they can fit it, I think that they would consider it. But I'm mentioning John Linsen's comment because usually I think he would ask that we also provide a tree. But he actually indicates here that the tree is directly south of the southwest corner, and he feels that the existing fence will suffice to screen. So I'm sufficing that he doesn't think a tree might do too well there.
Okay, that's fine. We'll talk about maybe in executive session, but appreciate any effort you can make within reason to ensure that there are sufficient trees and landscaping for the property when the product is complete.
Of course, thank you.
And then just to the point of the engineer's letter, you had mentioned it before, but we would include as a condition of the application, except specifically of the engineer's letter and the conditions included therein. That's acceptable?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay. Any other questions for members of the board?
Well, I'm just curious, when you talk about the garage flooding on occasion, I mean, is there some plan to replace the garage? Is it in good shape?
The garage itself's in good shape. So I think it was probably recited to match the house, but the garage itself is in good shape.
It might be more problematic if it was attached. Because it's attached, they can put things in there knowing that it sometimes might take some water.
All right, thank you very much. That's your last witness, Ms. Alfonso?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to say in conclusion for the applicant?
Unless the board has any questions of me, I would submit to the review of the board. Thank you.
Wonderful. Andy, what is our condition?
The only condition is our usual one, compliance with the conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum.
Okay. We have one, two, three, four, five. We all voting, Chris, just to be clear? I don't even know, one of us is on. Sorry. Good comment, though, right?
It was a great application, though.
All right, who would like to begin the deliberations then?
I'd be happy to.
All right.
Sure. So the variance is requested, FAR, lot coverage, building coverage. For lot coverage, in my mind, it's a pre-existing nonconformity. And you're actually decreasing the lot coverage a little bit, but still require the variance because there's too much lot coverage as it is. So in my mind, I'm very comfortable with that request. FAR, as we've talked about, is that strip of space in the attic where the height is seven feet, and that accounts for 105 of the 150 square feet in the attic. It's usable in that you can, you know, have the pull-down access, and it would be great storage, but it's not really going to be outfitted for living space. So in my mind, that's a simple nod, no problem. The building coverage, it seems like a higher number, 26% as clarified by Krista in her calculations. Feels, you know, feels high when the max is 20%. But after looking at the plans, the very simple and elegant architectural solutions to how to modernize this 1920s home and improve, I mean, that increase in building coverage is giving such a dramatic increase in functionality to the home. It's really aesthetically in keeping with the neighborhood. It's quite beautiful. I love the way it looks from the back of the home. And I appreciated the architect's description about the different leveling and roof lines and different depths that we experienced in the back of the home. There's also extensive stormwater planning and improvements to the space. So I can definitely support this application for those reasons.
Very thorough. Tom, she's got to give you a run for your money. When she misses.
90% of my nose went down the drain.
There you go.
Yeah, just everything, everything, everything that was just said, I agree with. I was concerned coming into this, you know, you see some big numbers. But until you get to the neighborhood and see that it's, you know, right now, the applicant has one of the smaller houses, at least in the immediate vicinity. And to make this change is really in keeping with what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. And I appreciate the effort to make those changes and keep the historical character of the house. So the inside will be modernized, the outside will still look like, you know, the 1920s, a very attractive architectural style. Most of it increases in the rear, so there's no impact, or not, shouldn't say no, but not a great impact to the front. And given that it's in character of the neighborhood, I don't see any negative impact on the neighbors. So I'd be inclined to support it as well.
Okay. Anyone care to add anything further? Scott, you're thinking about it. Anything?
No, I would just echo Jamie and Tom's comments. I mean, it is an undersized lot, and you can see for lot coverage, they're being penalized for having a long driveway, that's not their fault. For the building coverage, obviously, these houses were put into place long before the zoning laws were enacted. I don't think they should be penalized for that. I commend the architect for packing a lot into a little package. Echoing the staff comments that, what Tom said, the bulk is in the back of the house. It's great planning. I'm in favor of this application.
I would add, just calling attention to the addition of the mudroom. I should add, for safer ingress and egress to the property, which is a benefit. And then to Mr. Clark's point, the atypical, but certainly beneficial position of that air conditioning unit deserves a round of applause. We rarely see that position. We're grateful for it. Your neighbors, at least, will be, I think, come summertime. So I too could support the application. Do we have a motion to approve with the condition as noted?
Motion to approve.
All right. Diana, a second?
Second.
All right, Chris, he was a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Uco?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Oikitz?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Good work with your project. Ms. Alfonso, don't go far. We'll hear 24 Prospect Street.
Fine. No, I was going to say, if you're going to be tossing and recycling, could you toss mine as well? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, at some point, I'm just going to have to stick it out. No, I can do it. You're ready.
You're ready, we're ready.
Okay. There we go. It's me again. And I'm here with the Nickson's, Rich and Nicole, for their home at 24 Prospect Street. This home is unique, and this neighborhood is unique. As you'll know, I'm sure, it is right across from the Summit Oaks Hospital and down the street from the connection. But the homes immediately in this neighborhood really, this was designed to be consistent with the homes in that neighborhood and consistent with the current design of the home. I understand the home was built around 1975. And generously, Ms. Anderson gave us a specific history in her report confirming that, based on the city records, the home was built in 1975 as it currently sits, based on what she was able to find in the archives. Although they did not include plans, the 1975 plans were not located. Based on the historical data, it's understood, from Ms. Anderson's report, right, that the existing nonconformities, including the lot coverage and building coverage, where the lot coverage is 43.6% existing and 35% is permitted. We were originally proposing to maintain that existing lot coverage. However, after reviewing the astute comments of the board's professionals and agencies, we had a chance to speak with the applicants and suggest consideration of the generator, adding a generator, and whether they were going to need another AC unit or replacement with a larger unit. With that, we asked, the applicants asked their architect to go back and see if it was possible to add a generator and an AC unit in a conforming location. He was able to do that. I do have an exhibit. I'd like, I'm actually showing it on the screen. And this will be Exhibit A1, all one PDF.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris. And I will zoom in here to show you the proposed AC unit and proposed generator. Again, these are proposed future locations in the hopes that they might need or want a generator or that AC unit in the future as part of this project.
So I have a little trouble seeing it. It's right next to what is on the existing plan as an AC unit?
So on the existing plan, yes, there is an AC unit on the existing plan. The proposed AC unit and proposed generator would be right next to the existing AC unit. And that would be approximately 17 to 20 feet from the side lot line just because this lot does, it's an irregular shape. It's not a perfect rectangle.
So those new additions there, there's an AC unit and a generator, so they're two.
Yes.
So there'll be two AC units.
And the AC unit really is, if it's necessary, once they go through the construction process, I'm not sure they have all of that calculated out. But they're really doing a full renovation of the home, including, you know, AC upgrades and heating upgrades. And as soon as I said, oof, you might need a new unit, right, we want to make sure that you're not going to have to go back to the board for a lot coverage variance after all of this work that they've done, really, to design a home, that not only allows them the open, modern space, but this is a second story above the existing garage that they have on the site. And really, the existing lot coverage completely, it's within the existing footprint completely. We do need a variance also for a single side yard setback of 11.76 feet. We do need a, a variance also for a single side yard setback of 11.76 feet, where 11.76 feet is existing and 12 feet is required. I'm sorry, this is again, a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming, but we do need the variance because we are proposing to add that addition in the same setback of 11.76 The floor area ratio. Krista had Ms. Anderson, the zoning officer, in her report noted a floor area ratio of It's, it's about 16 feet different from the calculation our architect has. We're honestly not sure exactly where that 16 feet might be. It, it may be a step or the stoop, right, something to that, but I'm not quite sure. In either case, we would of course go by Krista's calculations and ask for that 30.13% floor area ratio where 23.6 is existing and 25 is permitted. Okay. Excuse me. And the other non-conformity that is existing that we are maintaining is the building coverage, 21.76%, where only 18% is permitted. Okay. I, do I have anything further if the board has any questions?
Questions from the board for Ms. Alfonso?
I just want to be clear, so you're, as Krista Anderson's suggesting, you're asking us to add the variances for the building coverage and lock, and lock coverage?
Yes, confirm those variances, yes. The lot coverage now, we are asking for a 0.2% increase to allow for that generator and air conditioning unit.
Okay. And a question, just are there any members of the interested public here this evening for this particular application, Prospect Street? Hearing and seeing none?
Just one quick clarification on the lot coverage figure. Does that make it 43.8%?
Yes. Yes, 43.8%. Original proposed was 43.6%.
Okay. You may proceed then with your next witness or a first witness.
Thank you. Thank you. I could ask Nickelsens to come up?
And if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Richard Nickelson, N-I-C-H-O-L-S-O-N. My wife Nicole, I live at 24 Prospect Street. We own the house. We live there with our three little boys, William, age six, Alexander, age three, and Henry, nine months. We've lived in Summit since 2018. We bought the house in June of 2018. We love Summit. We've really kind of grown into the community and, excuse me, and we love the house. When we were originally looking to purchase a home, Summit really stood out to us. I work in New York City. My wife Nicole works out in Basking Ridge for Verizon. So we were looking for a community to kind of split the difference and Summit really offered that to us. We love being able to walk to downtown. We lived in Jersey City for about 10 years. Being able to walk into town is a huge benefit for us. I can walk my son Alexander to St. Teresa's for preschool. We take our kids to Master Hughes Taekwondo Studio regularly, just walking into town for dinner. The, the location of the house for us, as Sam mentioned, is about three houses down from the connection, across from Summit Oaks, was a huge selling point, maybe the biggest selling point. We love the colonial layout. When we purchased the home, we kind of did so with the understanding we were going to have to do some work. The house is built in 1970s. A lot of the kitchen, I don't think had been updated when we purchased the home. The bathroom certainly had not. The upstairs hall bathroom, I think was the original. We actually had to replace it. We had some leaks and grout cracking and tubs. Our master bathroom is also, I think, existing. It might have been redone, though a long time ago. So the house definitely needed some work. We also have a laundry room kind of right off our kitchen, next to the powder room, which is kind of very inconvenient. You've guests over, everybody uses the restroom and your kind of laundry's sitting right there. We also have a large garage, kind of in the back of the house. You can see it on the plans. There's a open breezeway with kind of a trellis connecting the house to the garage. There's a, you know, a fairly sizable space under there. There's really not a good use for it. There's, I think, foundation under it. So I don't know if they, when they originally built the house, if their intention was to close it off or not. But, you know, since we, since we bought the house, you know, something that really occurred to us is connecting the house to the garage. It would be a nice feature. It'd be nice not to have to, you know, put your coat on every time you went out to the garage, considering it's right there and it is quite large. And we also, just looking at the house, could use additional space. The garage is there and if we were going to connect the house to the garage, it made logical sense to try and increase the footprint on the second floor, to add a primary bedroom and add a guest bedroom, since we've all, three of the other bedrooms are currently occupied by our sons. And then we have the, we'd be adding a bathroom on that additional, additional floor.
Thank you. That was sort of thorough, I don't think. Did you have an opportunity to review the board's administrative reports?
We did. We looked at them with our architect, John Lyons, and Ms. Alfonso.
Would you agree to be bound by those comments, subject to the comments of your architect?
We would.
Thank you. Did you have a chance to speak with your neighbors?
We did. If you face our house to the right, we spoke with the ex. They were in favor of the project. They have a large home, a kind of a larger lot. We spoke with the folks behind us, the Whippermans. I think they had done work probably five or 10 years ago, two additions. They were in favor of it. We spoke with the Merricks who are on the left side. They're kind of a smaller lot and a house on there. When we originally spoke to them, they, I wouldn't say they were concerned, but they were, you know, had some thoughts about, you know, building height and windows. So after that, we went back with our architect and we tried to reduce the footprint a little bit and also try and change some of the roof lines and add, you know, move the windows around to try and accommodate, you know, the Merricks property, because it is, it is right there next to us.
So you actually addressed those comments before you even called our office and filed the application, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything else for Mr. and Mrs. Nickelson unless the board has any questions on that.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Nickelson? All right. Well done, Mr. Nickelson.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could ask John Lyons to be called?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
John Lyons, L-Y-O-N-S.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the States.
Put your hand down.
I'm a licensed architect in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I have a master's degree in architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've testified in front of Summit a number of times, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Floren Park, number board in the surrounding area.
All right. Any questions from the board or would you like to accept his credentials?
Questions, we'll accept your credentials.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to stand. If I could borrow your microphone, thank you. Just to orient you, on the, on our, this is drawing C1.0. This is the existing site plan and this is the proposed. As we mentioned, the existing house is, the main house is here on Prospect. Existing home is actually setback a couple of feet beyond the front yard setback. There's an open breezeway. It actually has a roof over it, but it's open to the driveway side and has a lattice on the side yard. And then there's the existing framed garage. We're proposing, now this is on their proposed site plan, on the right side. We aren't adding any foundation to the property. These, we're proposing three new dormers that are on the front of the roof that face Prospect. They don't, those dormers in themselves don't require any variance. They don't add any floor area ratio because they're all below 7 feet. Reading these three dormers, we're adding a addition, second story addition over the existing breezeway and partially over the existing garage. The existing garage is existing non-conforming in the rear yard. The rear yard setback's 40 feet and that's at 3611. Our new, our second floor is conforming. We're actually at 41 foot nine, where 40 is required. So we're one foot nine beyond where we need it to be for that new space of public garage. Looking at the, the variance required for the project, Ms. Alfonso mentioned, side yard. The left side of the property, we're existing non-conforming at 11.76 feet, where 12 is required. So we're less than three inches into that side yard. However, we are at non-conforming and because we're putting a second story on top of that existing space, we need that variance. Here also, we're asking for the FAR variance, where if the new interior space we're adding are enclosing this breezeway and this empty space over, partially over the existing garage. There is a hardship for the project. As Ms. Alfonso mentioned, while this lot is conforming for lot width, lot width is taken at the front yard setback, which is 8 feet. It's 8.45 at the front. Tapers to the back down to 65, but 75 is required. As that lot tapers, the house tapers with it and becomes elongated towards the back. Which, as I, when I get into the floor plans, I'll show you how that became a challenge in trying to access that space. It required more circulation than you'd ideally have. Moving on to the floor plans. This is drawing A1.1. This is your existing first floor plan and this is your proposed first floor. Existing front of the home, this is the front door. Walking into the house, you have typical front, central colonial setup, where you walk in, stair going up to the second floor, family room, living room on the left side, come into the kitchen, dining room, and then where it gets less typical, where you then walk into the laundry room, which has a powder closet, and then you walk out to, this is that breezeway. This is that breezeway space, which is about 12 by, what I call it, square, which then steps down into the existing garage. So this is exterior space now with lattice along the side yard. What we're proposing at the first floor is to connect the garage. One of the things the Nickelsens wanted to have was a way to park the car, get out of the car, walk inside the house without having to go back outside after parking the car. We enclose that existing space. We actually pulled it in, this line represents the line on the second floor above. That is, that line is where the existing roof is now. We kept the, the second floor space there, but we pulled this in and therefore reduced some of the FAR that we were adding. Coming from the garage, there's a mudroom space at 6'8 by 10' and then a hallway with a small powder room that leads you then into the kitchen, by the way, I have an office and a cold closet, bring you into, into the first floor. This main block of space, there were no additions to. We did reconfigure it somewhat, opened up the kitchen and brought the dining room to the front, front of the home. Moving to drawing A1.2, this is the existing and proposed second floor plan. The existing second floor plan, this rectangle basis, is that covered breezeway and the roof over the garage at the rear of the property. Our proposed second floor plan, we brought that laundry room to the top of the, get to the top of the stairs, we have a laundry room, we have a hall bath, we have three bedrooms. We created a guest, guest bath to connect to the guest bedroom. Then we have, this is where we needed that hallway to get us to the back of the house. Because it is, this is that area over the breezeway. Again, it's only 12 feet wide. We needed to get through that space. Entering into that space, we have, this is the entrance to the master suite. We have a master bath, a master walk-in closet at 6'8 by 6', and then the bed, master bedroom at 11.7 by 17. And this is where we pulled this in so that it does not go out to the extent of the existing garage. This is conforming for that setback, whereas the existing first floor garage is not. The, looking at the space on the right side, this is our attic floor plan. This is showing those dormers. We have the three dormers on the front of the home. Again, they're all below 7 feet, so there's no add for FAR on that. They're strictly for static purposes up to, to.
John, before we jump to the next sheet, could you just, I'm looking at that proposed master bedroom, what size is that? Because you're really pulling in far from the edges of the garage, right?
Yes, and that was, as I mentioned, we talked to the neighbors, one thing we tried to do, and I'll start using the elevation, we tried to keep the height of this down and we also pulled it in. It's 11'7 by 17, which is, is a, not a large master bedroom, along with the closet at 6'8 by 8'. I mean, the closet, but it's.
It's not large, right? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Moving to drawing A2.0, these are the elevations. Again, we have existing front and proposed front and then existing right and proposed right, stacked on top of each other. The only change at the front elevation is the three dormers. No other change to the front of the house. The rest of the work is in the back. On the, this is the existing front, right side elevation, where you can see, this is that breezeway represented by that lattice. This is open air with a roof. Existing framed garage and then moving down to, this is our proposed. Again, you can see this is the side view of the dormers on the front of the home. And then now this is where we made, this is our garage, which we kept in place, and then this is that. Dormer, which we created to get the light into the master bedroom on that side. So that's our dormer, which is allowing light into the master bedroom. This is that hallway that leads us to the master bedroom. And then down below, this is our entrance into the mudroom and this is the hallway which leads from the mudroom into the kitchen area. Again, we tried, this is a good example of how we tried to keep the roof lined up. This is the second story, second floor space, but it's a, it's a very, it's a very imposing second floor space. We didn't bring the floor lines up to the point where they were false, full walls. We brought this down and popped up a dormer in it so they would sit down at a less imposing level. Moving to A2.1, this is the existing rear, proposed rear, existing left, proposed left. The existing rear of the home, this is the existing garage. And then this is the back of the home, where you can see if you're standing in the back of the property. We changed the roof lines on the garage to make them one more appealing visually, but also so that we could bring that down. We could have that dormer popping up out into it and keep the heights of that space, of that interior space down. This is the proposed left side with the left side of the garage, the lattice work and the main block of the home, the front of the property. With our addition, this is where you connect in. This is the master bath. This is a little window in that closet and then two windows in the, in the master bedroom. Here, originally we had more windows in that, in that spot in the master bedroom. And then we talked to the neighbors, we reduced the amount of glass that is in that area. We looked for spots to break this down and to break up this roof line and to break up some of the, some of that wall so that it would, give them more visual interest from that side as well. This is that side where we're existing, right up against that 11.76 feet on that property line. And then this was just our exhibit. And just to point out that this was the existing condenser and then this was our new proposed condenser and then it grew.
Can you confirm that it's 0.2% increase in lot coverage? Thank you. He, he calculated it, not me. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the board or the architects?
Are we going to have an engineer?
We do not have an engineer this evening.
Um, I'm guessing, or as part of all of this, are you going to end up redoing the driveway?
We don't, there's no work. We're not digging anywhere.
Okay.
And we're not, there's no digging, there's no foundation work. So it wouldn't have to.
Okay. No, no, the one observation, I mean, I, I know this house was built when nobody wanted garages in the front, so you've got all this driveway. And I see the space for the K-turn to get back out. That just looked like a really long space for a K-turn. And I'm not going to ask you to redo your driveway, but if you ever do, maybe you can remove a little bit of that paving.
That's, that's a great point.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lyons?
Thank you.
Architecture and engineering, does it all?
Yeah. Just ask if you could confirm that.
Um, and I see the space for the K-turn to get back out. That just looked like a really long space for a K-turn. Um, and I'm not going to ask you to redo your driveway, but if you ever do, maybe you can remove a little bit of that paving.
That's, that's a great point.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Lyons?
Thank you.
Architecture and engineering, who does it all?
Yeah, I'll, just ask, uh, if you could confirm that, is it your professional opinion that the site can accommodate the proposed increase in floor area ratio?
Yes, and, um, I, one thing the, uh, historic preservation question pointed out was that, um, while there is a, a floor area ratio variance required, uh, there's no impact on the street front. It's all the rear of the property. And then I, I thought that the, the look of the home was still in keeping with the existing home and was appropriate to the location.
All right, last call and questions for the architect from the board?
Uh, yeah, I have a question, just for clarity. The AC units and the generator are going to be on the side of the neighbors with the bigger property, correct? As opposed to the smaller, uh, property?
Yes.
Correct. By the driveway side.
Correct, right.
Dow, or anything you want to call attention to?
The only, well, we're not, there's a really minor increase in impervious coverage, uh, just with the condenser and the, uh, possible generator. Do you know offhand, and one of the questions, whether there were any existing stormwater improvements? If there's a dry well on the property, do the, do the leaders, uh, daylight out to the, from the, uh, right onto the surface? Or do they go underground?
They, they, they still on the surface.
Okay, so there, there's no change of that? And the only thing we'd say is that, or normal comment is that they don't direct any new roof leaders towards neighboring properties to exacerbate, you know, to make the existing conditions any worse?
Of course.
And Ms. Alfonso, uh, would it be acceptable to the applicants to condition this application on approval, acceptance of the engineer's letter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? No, recognizing, I don't believe there's any new, uh, members of the public here for this application.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough. Um, that's your last, uh, witness for the evening?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
Uh, unless the board needs anything further, I would thank you for your time.
It's the best closing, and Mr. Weber has trained you well.
Thank you.
All right, Andy, what are the condition we have for this application?
Once again, the only condition is compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum.
Thank you.
I, I have one question for, for Mr. Ball. I, I know this is a, a minor number, but should we get staff confirmation on the increase in the non-conforming coverage? That point two percent caused by the added, uh, AC and generator?
If you'd like to see that, yeah, we can, uh, I guess just request...
Of course.
Updated plans be provided to confirm that number?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so Jamie showed up, everybody at the last application. Who would like to begin the deliberations? You did a great job, Jamie. Diana, anybody, any takers over there?
I really want to do a good job. But I would say that the lot does, um, and the existing house do clearly, uh, present some challenges. I think that the architectural plans are very sensitive to the challenges that are presented to the neighborhood. I think they are very, um, very nicely done. Um, I think that, um, this, uh, plan will bring the house, you know, to modern standards without imposing any kind of hardship onto the neighborhood. I think that what's being requested is modest and I'm willing to support it.
All right, well done. Anyone try to add anything further?
I, I can't believe I'm saying this. I kind of wish that the, uh, the massing over the garage was bigger. I know that sounds insane and it's probably the last time I'm going to say this on the board, but, um, I just, I understand. You're trying to accommodate, uh, the concerns of your neighbors and I appreciate your efforts to do that, so thank you for that. And I think this is a very clever solution to a, um, it's a bit of a strange layout with the breezeway. So I, uh, you know, I'm glad that you were able to come up with a solution. I just think that you're going to go through all this trouble, might as well get an amazing, uh, master bedroom suite. Not that it's not great.
I'll try to never mind, uh...
I think it will be amazing. I think it will be amazing.
I don't think I'm going to last too much longer if I just have to, um, you know, get variances for more FAR, so... But I, uh, as proposed, I'm inclined to, um, approve this proposal.
Thank you, Scott. Please don't remember that testimony.
Well, and, and if we can go off in aesthetics, because I know the house pretty well. And I was very impressed when you moved in, the first thing you did was put a portico on. Because that, the facade had always looked bald. Um, so although, I mean, I have kind of been scratching my head about why are you putting non-functioning dormers, um, in the front of your house? Just for the heck of it? But it's certainly going to approve, improve the aesthetics, um, and do an even better job of fitting in with houses that are almost a hundred years older than yours. So, um, that really doesn't speak to the application, but I wanted to say it.
But I would imagine it's also going to get a little bit more light into those rooms as well, too.
Well, that's the attic.
The dormer is on that.
Oh, it's the attic?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
We have to redo the roof anyway. And I like the worst.
Uh, I, I would call, uh, the attention, of course, appreciate the responses to the neighbors, uh, not just with the, the setback, um, to the second floor, but also to the windows. Um, we appreciate the, the effort that you made, not just to make that connection, but to respond positively to it. We recognize, of, of course, the irregular shape of the lot and how that impacts, um, some of the design elements here. Um, and all of that kind of brought together, uh, it's my opinion, uh, you've sought and succeeded in minimizing any kind of encroachment on light air and space for your neighboring property. So, um, I'm very much appreciative of that and could support the application. So with the condition as noted, do we have a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Clear, a second?
Second.
All right, Diana, Chris, to give us a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Uco?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Loikits?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Doc Levine?
Yes.
Ed Chervensper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to take, uh, call it a three-minute recess just to stretch, let Ms. Alfonso leave the building.
Thank you.
Five Morris Court.
Hope you don't mind if I stand for a bit.
We're back at it. We're at Five Morris Court, Sarah Moran. We're going to swear you in and then you'll give us just a very brief introduction and then your architect's going to do all the heavy lifting for you. Okay?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
It's Sarah Moran, M-O-R-A-N.
Thank you.
Um, I am the owner of Five Morris Court. Um, I'll do a quick overview before I give my... My testimony. Um, so it is, I wish I could use the exhibit from Nine Laurel Ave because that's pretty much my house. Um, you know, in nineteen twenty-six colonial, very typical of this neighborhood in Summit. Um, I'm asking for two variances for a small ground floor addition and a, a second floor addition that does not require any variances. Um, Krista Anderson did point out an error on the survey, which Bill will speak to. Um, but for the building coverage, um, we are asking for twenty-two point six percent where twenty percent is allowable. And on the lot coverage, forty-five point seven percent requested where forty-five percent is allowable. Um, so on the first floor, it, um, is a small, uh, powder room addition off the existing sunroom. Um, that adds seventy-two square feet. And then extending, um, the existing sunroom off the second story. Again, no variances requested there, but that will also add a full, uh, bath to essentially make the, make the master an en suite. Pretty straightforward.
Excellent, that's wonderful.
Can you just clarify the building coverage percentage that you noted?
Um, so I think Bill has a revision. I know that there was a question on the handwriting as well as that the survey was wrong. So I believe we're at twenty-two point six percent with the new calculation.
Okay, and has that figure, has Krista's memorandum notes a twenty-three point two seven percent figure? Has that updated figure been verified with Krista yet? Or is that something that I...
I believe that we sent it over, but we haven't gotten a response yet.
Okay.
We'll talk to the architect about it.
Yep.
If necessary, we'll seek some confirmation from Ms. Anderson. Okay, any questions from the board for the applicant?
Can we just clarify what exactly the variances are in, in total that are being requested today? The building coverage, that might be twenty-two point six percent or maybe twenty-three point two seven percent? And then also lot coverage?
Lot coverage just for...
Forty-five point seven.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Yep.
And then I would note, unless one of those gentlemen back there are interested in this application and they're shaking their head no, uh, that there are no members in the interest of public here this evening, uh, with regard to this particular application. Okay, no questions from the board, no questions from the public. We'll hear from your architect next time. Thank you. We'll swear in up here, sir.
All right, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name?
William Figdor, F-I-G-D-O-R.
Thank you, and can you briefly describe your background, experience and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Uh, I was here maybe five years ago and previous to that, another few years before that. Um, I have two degrees. My most recent was at, was at Boston Architectural College. Um, and I've got about thirty years' experience.
And I imagine...
And I'm registered in New York and New Jersey.
That was my question. Any questions from the board? Would you like to accept this credential?
We'll accept your credentials. Figdor, may I proceed?
Um, okay, so this is actually, um, a copy of the house that we did next door at Seven Morris Court. Um, where they also had the same kind of, uh, layout. So this house had only one bathroom on the second floor and none, not even a powder room on the first floor. So that addressed the, uh, first floor issue, which is the seventy-two square feet that Sarah alluded to. On the second floor, the master bedroom shared the bath with the hall, the hall bath. So we put in a small bath in the, for our master and a walk-in closet. Um, that's a hundred twenty-eight square feet. The, uh, all the setbacks are met. There's no infringement upon the, uh, the existing, it's the same. Uh, the, Krista called me last, a few days ago and I didn't even know there was a, we were on the agenda, honestly. But she said, uh, this, something's wrong with your numbers. And she told me about the site, uh, plan. So the, the, from the surveyor, it said forty-seven hundred square foot lot. But when you calculated it, it was fifty-six hundred. So I readjusted the numbers, uh, and it brought our numbers down, which made us, uh, more compliant, not less. Um, and I brought a copy of the, uh, email to Krista verifying those numbers. So I guess we can use this as evidence? Or, I don't know if you need it, but it sounds like the numbers that Sarah gave you already corresponded to what I had sent.
Yeah, we have the updated memorandum from Krista, which gives the updated figures that were noted. There was just that slight discrepancy in the building coverage figure.
Uh, yeah, building, uh, yeah, so the, uh, building coverage proposed is twenty-two point six and twenty percent is required. And then the impervious coverage was forty-five point seven, so whereas forty-five is required.
Right, and I'll just note Krista's memorandum has that building coverage was previously, or her memorandum is noted as proposed at twenty-three point two seven. So there's that slight point six percent that's a...
Yeah, something was amiss, I don't know what the, but, um...
We, what's the best way to resolve this discrepancy? I, I just, I'm loathe to have you leave with a smaller number if in fact you need a larger number. That one percent makes a big difference.
Well, we're amenable to, um, whatever number you want to use.
So do we know where that point six percent is coming from exactly? Or are we not sure about that?
Uh, I don't know where her, her number came from.
Okay, um, so we could do it one of two ways. We could either, um, assume Krista's higher number is the correct one and use that for purposes of the application tonight. Or we can ask that the applicant submit either a revised figure or get that clarification upon consulting with Krista just to confirm what the final number should be.
You're confident, Mr. Figdor, it's twenty-two point six?
Yeah, based on the revised square footage of the lot, maybe she used a rounded number.
So let's proceed with the twenty-two point six, but we ask that revised or confirmed validated plans be submitted um, to ensure, to ensure that this is resolved or a resolution is ultimately adopted.
Okay, would that be submitted to the board or just when we're applying for the permit?
To the board, yeah.
Okay, and how many copies? Okay. And how many copies?
Chris, how many copies you want?
So you want this prior to the memorialization of the resolution? Is that right?
Yes, that's right. Maybe that's a question to pop with Chris afterwards.
Yeah, we'll have to think it out. Okay.
This is just, I think, a little bit of safety for us to validate the numbers.
Yeah, I didn't even know about this, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, okay. So we'll figure out the correct phrasing and all that and then you'll work with Chris regarding how many copies and all that type of issue. Okay. All right, may I proceed?
Well, can we also address now Krista's strong suggestion that they get a new survey? As long as we're talking about cleaning things up.
You can. Would you object to getting a new survey?
No.
Okay. Thank you for helping us clean this up. And you're going to get a new survey. All right. I think we're done asking for things at the moment. Would you like to proceed, Mr. Figdor?
Well, there's not a lot to say, actually. It's a bathroom downstairs and a bathroom upstairs.
Mr. Dower, would you like to offer any questions? Oh, no, I don't want to overcomplicate this, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
We still write a resolution here, so we've got to give them something.
I assume that the increase in impervious coverage is still the minimus because that would be under 300 square feet, which I believe we're talking about. So there's no requirement to put in any stormwater improvements. We just, normally what we say is that the, any roof leaders cannot be directed towards neighboring properties to make any conditions worse. And then if there's any stormwater issues after the fact, you have to address them both on your property and your neighbor's property. So that's fairly standard. Are there any proposed, in other standard language, any proposed new AC units or generator?
No, we're not doing any AC units or generator.
Does the house currently have central air?
Unfortunately not.
Okay. And then in the future, if you decided to add central air, then you would have to comply with required setbacks and screen?
For condensers. Yeah, we understand.
Mr. Figdor is being paid by the word here.
I'm sorry.
No, you're doing great, Mr. Figdor.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Just, is this on the first floor in the addition area? On the window side, there's a bench. On the other side, is that, is that a closet?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Andy, to help me get to a satisfactory resolution, are there particular elements of?
Yeah, I could ask.
Identify?
Questions.
Could help us know whether he else has any.
So I imagine the main purpose of this application is to improve the functionality of the home. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, I can give a little feel about.
If you could briefly.
Sure. So I live in the house with my three children, five, seven, and nine. So as Bill mentioned, we do have a second bathroom, but it's in the basement. So none of my girls will use it, which I don't blame them. I've never showered in there. So really the goal, I love this house. I have no credentials, but I am educated in architecture. I've worked in construction for 15 years. I love the historic homes in Summit. I have no intention of leaving. And so really the goal is just to make this home more functional for me and my kids. I wish I had the ground floor bathroom during potty training, but it's still, you know, something just to improve so guests don't have to go upstairs. And then obviously adding a second full bathroom just as my kids get older. So that's really the intention. But again, I appreciate the architecture, so the goal is to make it as seamless as possible, not changing anything else within the existing footprint.
Thank you. And then a question for Mr. Figdor. Are there any negative impacts to any of the surrounding neighbors as a result of this application, in your opinion?
Absolutely not. I think it's an enhancement.
And the architectural style is in keeping with that of the neighborhood?
It is. And as a matter of fact, the one on the left that was done a few years prior to this looks better.
All right. That should do it for me.
Thanks, Andy. Good work. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Figdor?
A few words.
I had a few words. All right, I'll take it. Ms. Moran, anything you'd like to say in closing and you're not obligated to do so?
No.
Okay. All right. Back to the top of the page, Andy. Tell us about the conditions that we've noted.
So first is our usual compliance with the conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum. Second is that revised plans will be submitted to reflect the final building coverage figure that was requested. And third is that the applicants will submit a new survey prior to a certificate of occupancy being approved.
Okay. Chris?
Just one thing for the building coverage. I'm just trying to, what would the board want to be willing to accept? Is email correspondence that's forwarded acceptable prior to the resolution? Are we running afoul from the Open Public Meetings Act at that point, Andy, or is that something we can send out to everybody?
No, that's certainly fine if it's just providing those updated plans.
That'd be great.
That works.
Thank you very much. Chris? All right. Who would you like to begin the deliberations? Scott? What do you got?
I mean, it's such a small request and it's obviously adding tremendously to the functionality of the house as they've testified. You can see that it's in keeping with the, they're not changing the style of the architecture of the house. It's a very modest expansion and providing so much utility. And so I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you, Scott. Do you care to add anything further?
I'll just agree with all that. I mean, I will agree with all of that. It is a modest improvement to the house. Well, major improvement to the house, a modest expansion of the variances and so forth. The numbers were a little confusing. There's some, you know, odd things in the history of the surveys and everything. But I think we'll get that all straightened out with some of the things we've addressed tonight. But I can support the application too.
Cool. All right. I would just add, I appreciate the efforts you're going to undertake to clarify the surveying and some of the numbers here. It should make for a future owner of the home and owners to follow a much cleaner bill of health. So I could support the application for those reasons and what Mr. Yuko and Mr. Lickets have noted. We have a motion to approve the application with conditions as noted. Still moved. Do you want a second?
Second.
All right. We give this to Malay.
Mr. Malay.
Okay, Mr. Yorlko?
Sure. Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Lickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toeth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moran. Good luck with your project. All right. Mr. Nagda, ever patient Mr. Nagda. Thank you for your patience this evening. We'll set. Let them get their easel sorted. We should be ready to roll. All right, we'll swear you in to begin. You can offer a brief introduction and we'll go from there now.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Sachin Nagda. Last name spelled as N-A-G-D-A.
I don't want to sit here anymore.
I do.
You just introduced us to the application and then we see you have two professionals with you this evening, so let them do all the work for you. So just give us a little brief background.
Yes, sure. Yeah, I'm here to present various applications for our new home at 30 Glen Oaks Avenue. My wife and me have lived in Summit for the last seven years. We have two lovely adorable daughters, age three and six, Leah and Prisha. And as the family is growing, we were looking for a new home and this is the new home we found last year. And just a description of the project. We're planning to do a small addition at the back of the house to convert existing three-season sunroom to a family room. And a second story addition on top of the family room to accommodate larger master bed, bathroom, and closet, walk-in closets, and office, home office. And we're also planning to raise the height of the existing bonus roof or the garage to make it more functional and useful. That's kind of the primary project. And there's some additional things we're doing as part of this project is that we're adding a new patio in the backyard. Remove a portion of driveway in the rear of the property and widening the entry driveway alongside the home for better travelability. The driveway kind of, you know, narrows down in the middle of the driveway. We're also planning to replace the existing wood singles roof with a new asphalt roof for easier maintenance going forward. All of these home improvements will make our home more functional and usable while preserving the aesthetics of the home and keeping it in line with the neighborhood. So that's kind of the summary of the project. One thing I would like to note that we made small revision to our plans, original plans that we submitted. We are adding 25 square feet to the second floor layout at the end of the hallway for better function. And now our architect expert will be presenting that additional change. And I think Krista has already weighed on those changes as well. Summary of the variances, we have three variances that we're requesting, lot coverage, flooring area ratio, and existing non-conforming rear and front yard setback. The existing lot coverage is 40.4 percent, which is already above what's permitted. We are adding 221 square feet, asking for variance at 43 percent. And the second is the existing flooring area ratio 22.2 percent. And we're adding approximately 600 square feet, asking for variance at 29.6 percent. So largest area in FAR is coming from that bonus room, which is below seven feet height and that's not counted in existing FAR. Since we are increasing the height, it's going to increase proportionately. And lastly, we're asking for rear and front yard setback variance as the existing rear wall of the garage stands at 37.3 feet from the rear lot line. And front of the house stands at the 29.5 feet. The portico stands at 25.4 feet. All of these are existing conditions. So that's kind of the summary of all the variances that we're requesting. And as for the hardship, the biggest hardship is the lot is kind of undersized for the zone at 8,250 square feet. And in our 10,000 square feet lot, we wouldn't have to ask for these variances if lot was properly sized at 10,000 square feet. So, and the garage entry is from the rear. And by the nature of that, existing driveway takes up a large portion of the lot coverage. Due to setback requirements, we tried figuring out if there is any alternate location, we could make a side entry or front entry to the garage, but it's not possible. There's no good solution to that issue. So given these hardships, I would like to request board to approve our application. We reviewed the staff comments and will be complying with them all. And I'll be providing testimony to that Krista had mentioned first comment where she said that we're removing a portion of rear driveway in the rear to make a straight line in the backyard. Right now, that kind of the portion of a driveway is protruding into the backyard to make it straight for visually pleasing. And I testify here that there's still enough room to, for convenient entry and exit out of the garage. So that's first comment. Second comment was from the engineering from Colliers regarding our proposal to add infiltration trench. We were originally not very sure about whether we needed any stormwater management. But, you know, we assumed mistakenly that we would have to add this because we are adding to existing non-conforming lot coverage. And based on the comment, it appears that city doesn't require us to do that because of the diminuteness addition to the lot coverage. I would like to see if we can take it out of our plans, that infiltration trench that we proposed. And we seek board's guidance, for the guidance in that regard as to kind of you suggest us, how should we remedy that because of the plans that we submitted already? Third, a few more comments. Eric Evers, Fire Chief, built to the code. All the detailed plans for the building permit will be compliant to the code. Gary Levish is asking us to provide AC powered interconnected smoke detectors on each floor as well as each bedroom and within 10 feet of bedroom doors. We'll be doing that, all of that in the detailed plans for the building permit. And the last comment is from John Lenson, City Forester, about adding a few more evergreen shrubs on the south side of the backyard to provide for better screening to our neighbors at 28. And we agree to doing that as well. So I have my expert witness, Tom, from Washington Architecture Group and Bill from Ensure Plan to answer any questions you might have.
I'm sure you need them. Yeah, I'd like to say, who prepared you for this evening? You're better prepared and more structured than a lot of attorneys we see here that do this professionally, so.
Thank you.
Kudos to you.
I mean, it was me. I was just with Bill's and Tom's help, I was able to prepare the script.
Hopefully they gave you a discount, so. All right, let's hear from your first witness then.
I do just have one brief question. I think you've explained it, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. You noted the floor area ratio that you're requesting is 29.6 percent.
That's correct.
And that's a tenth of a percent higher than Krista's number. Is that due to the 25 square foot increase?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And Tom will show you that additional 25 square feet. Thank you.
No pressure.
No pressure. I know, he did it all. I corrected him on some spelling when he showed us morning. But my name's.
Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Tom Chauvet, C-H-A-U-V-E-T-T-E. I'm an architect with the Washington Architecture Group. I'm a licensed architect and have been for some 30 years. I graduated from New Jersey School of Architecture down at NGIT. I appeared before this board before as well as Chatham Township, Chatham Borough, Summit, I mean Summit, Palm Park, Short Hills as well.
And I imagine when you say your license, your license in New Jersey, correct?
Yes, sorry. In the state of New Jersey, yes.
We'll accept your credentials. May I begin?
Okay.
May I move over here to the board? This is the adjusted exhibit, so do we want to mark that? In that it shows the additional square footage that Mr. Nagda talked about?
We'll mark it as A1 and make sure that a copy or perhaps that copy gets discussed here.
Yes, I'll use this copy.
Yeah, that would be great. And then if you can, just angle that microphone. Mr. Nagda. Yep, that'd be great, just.
Shout louder?
Use your outside voice.
Okay. Don't use your outside voice. So going to the second floor, just to show you what's different from what you have on your plans is we extended the hallway to get better access into the future, the bonus room, as it's called here. And on the bottom, we just have a closed, I mean a covered porch at the back door, which gives better shelter for coming in from the driveway. If you go to sheet three, this is your existing plan. There was a sunroom, what Mr. Nagda talked about. There was a three-season sunroom and what we call a den here. That's the area that we're removing. And as well, there was a balcony and a master bathroom that's being removed. And we are adding, on the first floor, we're adding a small family room, only 13 by 14, as well as a powder room and a mudroom. And then a rear exit entrance from the rear yard. On the second floor, we're adding a new master bathroom, closet, and a small office. The area over where we're getting a lot of the floor ratio increase is over this bonus room on the second floor. Right now, it is said it is only about a three-foot wide area that has seven-foot a headroom and it slopes down low. So we're not expanding the footprint of the first floor garage at all, where we are expanding out over the whole garage, which gives us the, we're relocating the existing bathroom, which was up here out front, to this middle section here. So they can have doors from this bedroom as well as the bonus room.
How's that bonus room used today? Is it storage?
Right now, the bonus room, if you go to the existing plans, you have to access it through one of the bedrooms. So there's no good way to get to it. So that's why we're pulling it out. The second floor is where all that little expansion to get into that. So it can be a usable, viable room and not have to walk through a bedroom to get there. All the addition that we're talking about is on the back of the house. We're not changing the front look of the house besides just putting new windows in, replacing the windows, replacing a new roof. So most of the addition is on the back. It's actually is all the back of the house. So from the street, the only really difference you're going to see is the section back here, which is about 24 feet back from the front face of the house, is that little section right there that's raised that you barely notice from what it was before. As Mr. Nagda said, he would have preferred that if we could have had the garage, he asked that question during the process, if we could rotate the doors to the side of the house. First of all, it's not deep enough and plus there's not enough width in the lot to be able to make it a side entry garage, which could have alleviated some of the impervious coverage. We don't have any increase or don't need a variance for the building coverage. So it was only a nine-foot wing on the back. We're only going out four and a half feet. So we're not adding a whole bunch of additional area on the first floor. Most of the square footage is increased on the second floor and over the bonus. So that's about it. Any questions?
Questions from the board to the architect?
Is it your opinion that the site can accommodate the proposed increase in floor area ratio? Yes.
Thank you. I would note that there are no members of the public here, present. So no objectors, no board either, I suppose. board either, I suppose. Okay. Hearing no questions. Mr. Dyer, any questions for the architect or?
No, this time.
Okay. Wonderful. You take a seat, and we'll hear from your next witness, Mr. Nagda.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear from testimony about giving this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
William Scott, S-C-O-T-T.
Thank you. Can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree from the Clarkson University School of Engineering. I obtained my license in professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey in 2004, currently in good standing. I've appeared before Summit Planning and Zoning Boards on several occasions. I've also appeared before neighboring boards in Chatham, Madison, Randolph, Springfield.
Thank you. Any questions, or would you like to accept this credential?
No questions, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. So from an engineering perspective, very minor project, very minimal grading in the backyard, changed the grades of the lawn by a few inches to direct the stormwater away from the patio and around the house. The project was designed in, keeping in mind the attempt to minimize the impervious coverage. On sheet one of our plan, you'll see a drawing to the left of the page, everything you see in red is existing to be removed. You'll see a large portion of the existing driveway we're proposing to remove, and that's really done solely to decrease the impervious coverage on the site. The drawing to the right of the page, everything you see in pink is the proposed. You'll see the very minor increase in building footprint, you'll see the proposed patio, and to the north of the existing house, you'll see the small sliver of the existing driveway that we're asking to widen, and that's being widened solely to reduce the conflict with the neighbors' evergreen trees. And that really sums up the extent of the engineering design on the site.
All right, we'll let Mr. Dower have the final word on that, though.
Sure, absolutely.
Anything you'd like to draw attention to, Mr. Dower? Well, if we're taking out the infiltration trenches, I noticed in my report, it wasn't required. It's a diminutism, diminutinous amount accordance with the ordinance, and the, so there really was not, it wasn't necessary to put in, I guess my question to Mr. Scott is whether or not there's, reducing the runoff in the back because you're taking up the part of the driveway, but you are adding the patio, is there an existing issue with stormwater drainage in the property?
There's no existing issue, or I don't believe there'll be a proposed issue. It's been my experience in the past that the board has always been very receptive to us being proactive and dealing with any increase in impervious coverage. Perhaps I overstepped because of this minor nature and shouldn't have put this in. I designed it as an infiltration trench, thinking that I could bring more water into the root systems of the pachycephalosaurus and the evergreens that are on that sideyard. However, there were some comments with concerns as to how that trench might impact the root systems of the evergreen trees. So I don't feel that taking the trench out would negatively impact any of the surrounding properties at all. I have to leave it up to your discretion and to your board's engineers' discretion. And, you know, if you'd like us to discuss it with Mr. Linson, I certainly could do that as well.
Well, it would have been a concern, I think, I believe I made a comment to that point, that there could have been, whether or not there was a concern with affecting the existing root structures. The only thing is, if we wanted to capture some stormwater, what I may recommend would be to take that trench drain, instead of putting it where it was proposed, put it alongside the patio on that side of the patio, so you're cutting down the length of it, and you're already disturbing that area to put in the patio, so you'd just be putting in a French drain right alongside of it, so that any runoff from that patio then would be captured right there, and it'd give more of an area to disperse. Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Does that need to be a condition, Andy, or is that just commentary we would include in the resolution?
Would we want to see updated plans reflecting the French drain?
If he's going for a grading permit, it could be done at that time. I don't think the board needs to see that, as long as it's captured, you know, with the testimony, I think that would be fine. So you're eliminating, one, you're adding a smaller area, but it's more directly picking up the runoff from that area.
I think just a simple condition that the applicants will install French drain along the patio will capture that testimony there.
And do we need to specifically reference that previously proposed infiltration trench will not be?
Will not be installed in favor of one along the patio for whatever that length is, I think it's, what is it, 10 by, 10 by 22, so it's 10 feet roughly?
I'll ask the silly question, is it, would it be appropriate for us to retain stormwater jurisdiction?
I think it's minor. If there was something more involved, I'd say yes, but this is very minor.
Perhaps there are some landscaping improvements that could also address any additional runoff, so not that we would condition a landscaping plan, but ask you to be sensitive on the installation of the patio, completion of construction, and consider the strategic placement of landscaping. Anything else, Mr. Dower, you'd like to call attention to?
Unless I mentioned anything about the AC units and generators?
You did. We would be adding appropriate screening vegetation on the existing air conditioning generator units, which all do comply with the appropriate setbacks.
It's quite the feature right now.
And then maybe just quickly back to the landscaping point, Mr. Linson calls out improving screening to the home at number 28 Glen Oaks Avenue? You saw that note?
Yeah, our applicant had mentioned that in his opening, certainly we state that we'd be happy to add landscaping along that southerly property line.
Condition, or just testimony to reflect in the?
Up to you, if you think it's, frankly, I think it's probably sufficient just to be captured within the testimony unless there's specifics that we want to be addressed in the condition.
Mr. Nagda, do you have an opportunity to speak with your neighbors about this project?
Yes, we have spoken, and they've been receptive of this project for 20 years.
Okay, well, we'll just reflect it in the?
This home hasn't been updated in the last four years that they've lived there, so they definitely think that.
Their home value will appreciate it. Okay. All right, nothing further from Mr. Dower. Last chance for members of the board for questions. That's got you.
Just quickly, is the patio open, John?
We're not proposing a specific break type, so I would answer no. Also, because of the proximity to the house, I tend not to like bringing that water directly down through and next to the basements.
All right. No further questions for the engineer?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scott, thank you. All right, Mr. Nagda, if you'd like to say anything in conclusion, you're welcome to.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your time and service. I know it's a lot of hard work here, and good on you. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, Andy, we have, I see two conditions?
Yes, the two. So our usual compliance with conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum, and then the second condition is that the applicants will install a French drain along the length of the patio in lieu of the previously proposed trench drain. And that's 10 feet, right?
I believe that's 10 feet that's written on the plan.
And assuming that the board were to approve the application, you'd have the ability to review the resolution language to ensure that all of that detail is captured correctly. All right. Jamie, Diana, and Scott have done a great job. Who would like to lead the deliberations?
I can ask a question first. I want to make sure I understand what we said about the FAR variance. Krista's report says 29.5. I think that tiny little corner made it 29.6, and I thought I heard the applicant say that Krista has seen this.
Yes, this is the second.
Do we have that documented somehow, or should we need, do we need document?
It's in her comments. It's in her comments itself. She mentioned that the device plans were sent out on February 22. I think it's the second paragraph. It's in her comments.
This guy's good.
Yes, it's being submitted, yes, but then she says the following comments include the proposed revisions, and she still has it at 29.5. I mean, it may not be worth, you know, at the time we're spending on it to worry about it, but.
And I guess I'll add to the potential confusion there. It seems that her proposed increase was considering point, an additional three tenths of a percent, as opposed to the one tenth of a percent that we were discussing here. Do we have that final number clarified with certainty, or is that another condition that we need to include just to finalize it?
What's say if the architect?
I'd say it's 29.6. That's what Nagda testified.
And we're, okay.
Has Krista stated the final?
No, she had been saying point three percent addition, and the previous was 20. It's pretty rounding, man, because it was saying 29.2, and then she had a point three.
The previous was 29.3.
Twenty, that's how we got to 29.6.
23 is 29.6.
All right, so if we are then sure that that's the final number, we don't necessarily need to condition it on Krista seeing it again, as long as the board knows they're proposing 29.6 as the variant request here tonight.
Comfortable with you, Mr. Nagda?
Yes.
And then I would just ask, Chris, if you can just watch this stuff internally, this is our second application this evening where there's some disconnect, and maybe it's the late discussion of some revisions, applications?
Yeah, I was actually just going to say something about this one particularly, was that this was a plan revision that came in, unfortunately, it wasn't going to meet the 10-day requirement for revised plans, so rather than just not have anything to go off of, Krista wanted to put that into her memo, so you would have something to go off of, and that was the intent of the second paragraph comment that she made, which would reflect the exhibit which was done.
Okay, all right.
But yes, ultimately, we can keep an eye on that.
A little confusing, but we appreciate the applicant, they're experts, and then Andy is always trying to clear this all up for us, so. Okay. Any other questions before we move to deliberations? Okay. Tom, would you like to, the honors?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I can support the application. I appreciate the effort that I went into this to, you know, make it an attractive project. I'm a little uncomfortable with it where the numbers are a little confusing, but I think we have it straightened out. I think it's an attractive addition to the house, to the neighborhood, so I can support it.
Care to add anything further to Mr. Yuko?
Yeah. I was going to say, I am always a sucker for the argument that it's an undersized lot, and if it were the proper size, we wouldn't be here. And add to that, removing some of the impervious coverage, you know, I'm hooked. And then, again, the floor area, a lot of the floor area ratio is because you're increasing the ceiling height on the bonus room, which effectively does not change the house from the outside, so I can support this application.
Anyone care to add anything further?
I'd like to add one thing. Despite the undersized lot and the increase in lot coverage, the building coverage itself is still below by at least a percent the allowable limit, so.
Good observation. I would add, or I'd rather extend my appreciation for the landscaping we discussed, while not a formal landscaping plan, some sensitivity to the impact on neighbors especially. I'm so appreciative to you, Mr. Nagda, acknowledging that and hopefully taking some action. A minor, minor thing, but I think important still, is the late addition of FAR, that access to the bonus room creates a covered portico on the back, which should allow for safer ingress and egress to the property for the family, so we appreciate that late addition, and I think that should be a clear benefit to the property and to the residents. And then I think when we looked at the front projection of the property, the very modest visual impact, and appreciate the efforts that were undertaken to accommodate so much benefit in the property without really a negative visual impact to the neighborhood. With that, I could approve the application. Do we have a motion to approve the application?
Motion to approve.
Oh, okay, sorry. Have a second?
Second.
All right, clear. Chris, will you give us a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Lickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes. All right, well done, Mr. Nagda. Good luck with your project. Thank you very much.
I'm not asking you to take all that home.
And just to confirm, there are no resolutions, no minutes for approval?